We do have a home education at the end, but it's not in the middle. So just keep going and then you can go back to the home education. For that needs a roll call.
I'll just stop it. Okay. Mr. Nutter?
I pledge allegiance. Why? And I say to America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Clerk, please call a roll.
Ms. Maris?
Here.
Mr. Dakota?
Here.
Ms. Doherty?
Here.
Mr. Hoi?
Here.
Ms. Lay?
Here.
Ms. Martin?
Here.
Mr. Nutter?
Here.
Seven present.
Thank you. I believe, Mr. Superintendent, we have the introduction of new principals.
Yes. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, School Committee. Honored to introduce our new principals for the 2019-2020 school year and beyond. Dr. Guillory, our chief schools officer, will be sharing the introductions and they are here today with their families.
Awesome. Thank you, Mr. Superintendent, Mr. Mayor, School Committee. First up, we have Mr. Michael Domina. He's the new principal at McAvenue. Mr. Domina brings 24 years of education experience to the principal role as a teacher, district support specialist, and having served most recently as the assistant principal at McAvenue. Please welcome Mr. Domina.
Please come up. Would you like to say, come forwards?
Do I have to?
You don't have to.
I'll say something. I'm not prepared, but... So I'm honored to be able to continue to lead McAvenue. It's been a long journey. This will be my sixth year there. We're doing really good work, really focused work on supporting kids and making sure the experience is as best as possible. So I'm very excited and we are ready, even though it's not opening day yet. We're ready to go. So I'm excited. Thank you very much. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Domina. Next, we have Dr. Kimberly Henry. She is the new principal of the STEM Academy at Rogers School. Dr. Henry brings 19 years of educational experience to the role. She was a high school principal in central Massachusetts, an assistant principal in Springfield and West Hartford, Connecticut, and she also served as a school improvement specialist at Bloomfield High School. Please welcome Dr. Henry.
Hello. So I'm just so... I told Mr. Underwood that I was going to say thank you. I'm very honored. So Ricky, here you go. But we're really, really looking forward to the work that we're going to do at the STEM this year. So far, the community has just been so welcoming and I'm so grateful. I've been to... This is, you know, if Lowell is the third biggest urban community in Massachusetts, I've been in all of them at this point now. So I'm excited, but there's none with the small-town feel that Lowell has extended thus far. So thank you so much for welcoming me to your community and I look forward to seeing you all on your visits to the STEM.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Henry. Next, we have Dr. Scarpatti, principal of the Greenhouse. Dr. Scarpatti joins us after seven years of serving as a principal of Amherst Street Elementary in Nashua. Prior to this, she worked as a teacher in Nashua and an assistant principal in Hampstead, New Hampshire. Please welcome Dr. Scarpatti.
Thank you. I'm very excited to be joining the Lowell educational community. Everyone's been very helpful and welcoming thus far and the Greenhouse is ready to go. The staff there have been working really hard and have done an amazing amount of learning and work during their turnaround plan and we are ready to implement and roll from day one. And I look forward to seeing great things this year from the students and staff there. So thank you.
Thank you.
So, Mr. Mayor, School Committee members, you can start to see why we are so very excited about this year. You know, I start to... Sometimes I wonder, maybe I'm the least qualified person in the room. So we have some really qualified people joining the team and we have really great people already here as part of the team and it's just a great team to serve young people in a great city. So thank you for, in your case, Mike, for elevating to the role of principal and Jen and Kimberly for joining our team. Welcome.
Thank you. All right, next, we have... I need a motion to accept and place and file the special meeting minutes and the regular meeting minutes of July 17, 2019 meeting and the special meeting minutes of August 14, 2019 of the Lowell School Committee. Need a motion to approve? I got Ms. Martin, second by Mr. Dakota. All in favor? Thank you. Next, we have permission to enter. Mr. Superintendent?
Thank you. You have a series of contracts in your packet. Staff is here to answer any questions. The recommendation is approval as written.
Any questions regarding... Ms. Nutter?
Community teamwork.
Community teamwork.
Yeah, we should.
I'll just make a move. So a motion to approve all the...
Yeah.
...offices to enter except community teamwork.
Okay. I just need a motion to approve everything but the community teamwork, Deborah. My... Mr. Hoi, I mean, I missed him. No, this one's okay.
Everything but CTI.
Motion made by Mr. Dakota, second by Ms. Doherty. It's a roll call.
Ms. Maris?
Yes.
Mr. Dakota?
Yes.
Ms. Doherty?
Yes.
Mr. Hoi?
Yes.
Ms. Lay?
Yes.
Ms. Martin?
Yes.
Mr. Nutter?
Yes.
Seven yeas approved. Now we need a motion to approve CTI.
Okay. I now need a motion to approve the community teamwork. Again, Mr. Dakota and Ms. Doherty. Roll call.
Ms. Maris?
Yes.
Mr. Dakota?
Yes.
Ms. Doherty?
Yes.
Mr. Hoi?
Yes.
Ms. Lay?
Yes.
Ms. Martin? Mr. Nutter?
Yes.
Six yeas, one absent approved.
Thank you. You can come back. All right, next, we have memorials. First, Oscar Rodriguez Sr., father Magali Ronan, Greenhouse School Assistant Principal, and Joseph Dosal, grandfather Pine Arts Assistant Principal, Laurie Lang. Please knock on the chamber. Next, we have a motion by Ms. Doherty. Request the superintendent provide the committee with a report that highlights the LPSK to 12 environmental science curriculum, including programs, grants offered through Project Learn or other outside entities, as well as school-based initiatives such as student recycling groups. The motion approved by Mr. Hoi, second by... Thank you. Ms. Doherty?
Thank you. I think the motion pretty much speaks for itself. I'm not looking to create a whole lot of work for you guys, but I did have somebody ask me about what we were doing to teach the kids about environmental science and I thought, you know, that'd be important to know. So I appreciate just getting kind of a snapshot. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Next, by Mr. Nutter. Request policy... I'm sorry. Ms. Martin?
Small point, and I'm sure you're aware of this too, but including in this, I know Project Learn had a specific program that's, I don't believe it's running right now, but they had in the past around environmental... It was basically part of the career path at the high school. Okay, because that, I know, was a really interesting program where they were actually offering on-the-job training and things like that. So just to include that. I just... Is it still functioning now or... Oh, that's great. That's great.
That was why I said Project Learn in the motion, because I think that program has internships and it'd be great.
And it's well received by the students that took part in that program.
Can I interrupt for just a second because they're getting ready to leave? I just wanted to recognize that Magali Ronan is here. We just honored her father and I wanted to recognize that she is here in the audience as well.
Thank you. That means a lot. Thank you.
Mr. Dakota, did you have a question? If you want to say. Thank you. Next, we have a motion by Mr. Nutter. Request public policy subcommittee meet with the administration before the two October school committee meetings to review revised policy on school committee visits, social media, and fundraising. Need a second by Mr. Hoi, Mr. Nutter?
Thank you. We have an 800-page
Yes, we do.
...policy, document policy. There are several policies that need to be reviewed, updated. You know, for instance, on Powers and Sullivan, when they did the auditing on the school fund, they talked about, you know, fundraising and, you know, money that, you know, if the class of 2019 had money left over, we don't have a policy that says what to do with that money, how it's distributed, where it goes back to, or anything like that. So the other issue that I just came across, we have so many really good teachers who are rank-and-file staff who are trying to do special projects and there's a... I just found there's a school site called, I believe it's schoolproject.org. However, I don't think we want teachers trying to get an air conditioner for their classroom. That, to me, just opens up all sorts of liability issues. So I think we need to look at, you know, setting some groundwork as far as fundraising and social media and having, you know, things run through principals, you know, rather than, you know, just letting everyone do everything. The other issue that we need to add to this is when it comes to screening committees. I know we had issues with the former superintendent on, you know, there... We have a policy about screening committees, but head reform is very clear that the final buck stops with the superintendent. And so we just need to make sure that everyone is aware of that. So...
The process has to be clear, too.
Right. So these are all just things that we need to start addressing and working on and that's why I thought it would be a good idea to start in October.
I think it's a worthwhile endeavor, especially when you brought up the issue of air conditioners. I mean, there's a quality of life for teachers and students in classrooms, so I think there's has to be a different way of us handling that type of information because many parents called and concerned, "Well, my friends, they're at another school. They bought air conditioners. Their rooms are comfortable. Why can't we do it at this school?" But it opens up so many liability issues and it's something that we have to take care of. Thank you. Next motion by Mr. Nutter. Request advisory from the city solicitor's office on process procedures to allow any school committee member to participate in regular special school committee meetings remotely via telephone, FaceTime, or Skype. I need a second. Mr. Dakota or Mr. Nutter?
Again, this is pretty self-explanatory. I was away for one of the meetings for family emergency and I had volunteered to Skype in, but the lot of department said, "We don't have a policy that allows us to do that." And, you know, Ms. Martin had some issues that she was dependent on somebody else to give her a ride. She could have participated from home had we had the ability to do that. So I just think we need to...
It's actually been raised in the city councils. I talked about in general, but
Right.
I think, yeah, correct.
Thank you.
Any other comments on that? Okay. Thank you. Then we now have reports of the superintendent. Lowell High School Building Committee verbal report.
Mr. Hall, can you share an update from the Lowell High School building project?
We did have a meeting about, let's see, on Monday, last Monday, and we're going to have a meeting every two weeks. There's approximately 14 people involved in this meeting. There'll be some dates, et cetera, that the city is going to authorize to come out in the near future so the public and the school can be updated. But this is going to happen on a two-week basis and I'll keep the superintendent and the committee updated on what comes out of the meeting.
And I would say that this is a real exciting time for our community. It's a real exciting time for our school district. It's an exciting time for the city and we're just really looking forward to the entirety of this project. Everybody's obviously looking forward to the project's completion, but we think it's really extremely important to continue to communicate clearly, openly, and timely with the community. So we're going to do that through these updates with the school committee and we will stay in line with all of the work and on time with all of the work as it's presented through the city. And we're just really thankful for the city manager's leadership of this work.
Mr. Dakota, then Ms. Martin?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Has there been a timeline established for when teachers and other people that have been associated with high school to have input as to what will or not be put into the school? Has that been...
There's going to be a constant on that. The construction company has already... Right now, they've gone through the high school to look at what needs have to be taken care of. So while the construction's actually going on, we're not forgetting the issues that teachers have had to deal with in the school, such as heating and that type of thing. But in order for this type of contractual thing to work out, there's going to have to be a lot more communication with the teaching staff, the administrative staff of the high school, with the construction project itself. So as far as... There are some dates. I don't recall one that are in there, but there'll be... It's anticipated there'll be more dialogue than we've ever had before in this matter.
I'm really hoping...
It's a safety issue, too.
I'm really hoping, because you know where I'm coming from with that, because I don't believe anybody was looked at or spoken to about the last renovation that took place in the auditorium at the high school. And I would like to make sure that we're careful about what happens.
But don't forget, we're talking about a renovation versus a complete redo. So the thing is, they're going to go down to the walls, you know, to the studs and work their way out. But you're right. I mean, as... Out of the music department and what have you, there are certain things you want to... That are in there. You want to make sure that they remain in there and what have you.
Yeah. One thing we can't have is a sound booth that doesn't have an open window. That's just...
You know, sometimes you want too much.
That's taking privacy way out. Thank you.
Okay. Ms. Martin?
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. Just to follow up, too, on that is that the... In addition to the biweekly meetings that are going on, there are still the school... Building Committee is still meeting on a monthly basis. And I know that the superintendent was able to attend at the last one, which was very appreciated. Just to bring up the point that, you know, the committee has been presented with a great deal of information as part of those ongoing meetings. And I think that for, you know, again, in part, trying to keep the public apprised of each step of the process, the city does have a specific page on its website where all of these timelines, as they get updated, are, you know, being updated right there on the website so people can take a look at it. I think at the most recent meeting, what I was most impressed with was the discussion points around some of the safety measures that they're putting in place during, you know, for during this construction. We recognize that there are real challenges to kind of building around students and ensuring that they're safe and that the learning environment isn't compromised and kind of talking about the shell they're building around the active construction site activities, I thought was really impressive. So I would say for our community, that is a... It's a great resource to go to the city site to see all those updated materials. It is getting to the point now where you really can see the progress, which is certainly encouraging for all of us who've been having this conversation for many years at this point. But being able to see the artist's rendering of the, you know, the actual buildings and to see the, you know, the goals that have been set over time for the construction process, it's a great resource. So I think as we're moving forward, certainly from the administration perspective, we'll be getting those updates and we'll also be getting the updates from the school building committee as we move forward. Thank you.
No, thank you. That's a very good report. I mean, the steps that they're taking now and this whole design package is so different than what we've had to deal with before. Before it was, I mean, sometimes it was a hope and a prayer, but now this is real work to be done. So thank you for that report. I like this, ensuring a flawless school opening. Mr. Superintendent?
Thank you. By virtue of the technology upload, I'm going to ask if we can take these a little bit out of order and go to 8.3 ahead of 8.2. Mr. Mayor, is that okay with you?
As the rest, okay. Yes.
All right. Dr. Guillory is going to share with us an important update. If you recall from the budget adjustment of our last meeting, nearly $1.3 million was allocated direct to school budgets. This is an update as to how we're making sure that those resources are maximized and used efficiently at every school site through empowering families, teachers, principals, and school support staff to play a meaningful role in decision-making at each school building and within each school community. Dr. Guillory?
Thank you, Mr. Superintendent. Again, the idea, the hallmark of site-based budgeting is that those that are closest to the students are making the informed decision as to how to allocate or transfer those dollars into resources. So while we acknowledge the 1.3 and 1.3 million in terms of dollars, we are leading our schools through a process of resource allocation. So how do you convert those dollars to resources? So we've identified a process. We've identified a process for allocating the funds and converting those to resources. We have identified some, defined some criteria for schools to consider. We will be centrally calculating a resource allocation, again, and that's based on need. And while all of our schools have high need, when you look at 1.3 million, if we... The easy thing would be to do is to take that and divide it by our number of schools and get that out. But that's allocating dollars out. So how do we get resources or get that converted to resource? And that's the process that we are planning to undertake with our schools. We will notify the school principal and they will... Who will in turn notify the school site council of their amount. The school team will then submit their plan or how they intend to use those funds. And then the central office will review, provide feedback, or provide approval for the use of those funds. The criteria that we're using, we have some identified service needs right off the top. So for our English language learners, there's a need there for resource as well as special education. And what we're going to do is by school identify where those known needs are and allocate resource to that. Then we're going to consider our high priority issues not covered by other grants. So the issues that Dr. Boyd shared last week around bubble classes and then also looking at prior resource cuts. And again, the idea, it would be very easily for us as central office to say, "Here is one teacher," but that may not be the way that that's best intended now or best utilized now, given the involving needs and ever-changing needs of our schools. So the idea would be how do the parents, the school site council, the leaders see those funds being best utilized? And they submit the plan back to us to say, "This is how we're going to do that." We've proposed a timeline. Our goal is to get that resource in front of students by the week of September 30. So... And you might say, "Well, goodness, school is starting next week. Why so long?" The idea is this process is a thoughtful process. Again, we can rush and allocate or we can lead our schools through a process by which they engage their community, engage in dialogue, get the input, and say, "This is how we feel we can best utilize this resource for our students." So our plan is by the week of 8/26 next week, notify schools, those that will be receiving funds, identify them of the amount. We will ask for a quick turnaround and these are suggested, but the quicker the better. The week of 9/2, submit those back to central office for our review. And then we have what we're calling a rolling dispersal. So depending on how you need or how you will allocate that resource, that's contingent. So if I'm... If I need to hire a new teacher, there's a process or a timeline for that that's going to be about approximately 20 days. So I can't say that by 9:15, everyone will have what they need, but the idea is by the end of September that those resources are in place for the schools in front of the students. And you have your eye chart test here, but you have it in your packet as well. These are suggested menu items, things that we've heard people share, what they need. So when you look at a teacher, we've allocated or parceled that out by a portion of the time and what the anticipated or what the projected cost of that would be. So schools will creatively come up with what their particular needs are or how they would purchase or what they would purchase with those particular funds. Mr. Superintendent?
We'll make sure we provide that to you electronically in zoom-in option. Looking at the hard copy here. But it's a... What I think's important to see here is that we're looking at both sides of a budget. It's not just about providing dollars. We've got to convert those dollars, as Dr. Guillory said, into resources for kids. The menu of options are a variety of different possibilities of how these dollars can translate into resources for students. And we're looking for our principals, our teachers, our family members, and our school-based support staff to weigh in on that decision through a site-based decision-making process, a collaborative process to determine how those dollars are best used to meet the needs of students in each individual school. Two schools may have two very different decisions made and those very different decisions could be, both be the right decision, even though they're different because of the different needs of our school-based communities. And you also see there that on the right side is that you don't only... We're not only requiring of our schools, if they were purchasing a position, to purchase a full-time position. Sometimes we can best metabolize resources and dollars by having part-time positions at multiple schools where those positions are then able to serve several schools. There was a ask from the school committee of, "Well, what if it's... The school is just slightly short in resources? How does that work?" Well, there's an option there that you don't necessarily need to commit to a full-time, but a .8 position. It's in .2s for the community because .2 makes up one day of the week. So it's by day. Now, no school, for those that are watching, millions and millions worldwide, the idea here is that we're not offering out .2 jobs. Instead, maybe five schools are saying, "We have the same resource need for our kids. We come together. We have the one FTE that works across five schools." And that becomes the one FTE that then is allocated. We'll get that to you in full form. It's just an example of how we start to provide out options and how that works so that schools understand both sides of the equation, both the cost and the expense. This is different information than was provided out to schools historically here in Lowell. So this is some of the new information we're sharing with them and our finance team has been working hard on these visuals, which unfortunately, we can't all appreciate here today, but we'll get you the zoom-in.
School readiness.
All right. Now, this is extremely exciting. This is item 8.1 or 8.2. Did you want me to... Did you want us to roll directly into that, Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
All right. So you see, we have it titled, "Ensuring a Flawless School Opening." In order to have the best year ever, we got to have the best first day ever. to have the best year ever, we gotta have the best first day ever. And we really believe in Lowell Public Schools, that you inspect what you expect. And if we expect a flawless opening, we have to measure that, we have to monitor that. And Dr. Guillory is gonna share with you some of the excitement to build up to that first day, and then also the progress monitoring system that we have in place to ensure that every school truly is ready on day one.
Thank you, Mr. Superintendent. We're six days away, six days away to the first day of school. More will be shared about our back-to-school events, so I won't go into that now. But this is a litany of experiences that we've had thus far. On August twelfth, we welcomed back all of our administrators to the district, all of our school leaders, assistant principals. August fourteenth and fifteenth, we had a great leadership retreat. Ms. Desmond and I worked with our school leaders. Out at Pine Arts, we had some of our school leaders actually share some of their experiences in lead sessions, as well as other central office administrators. So we certainly appreciate their time and attention there. August twenty-second, we had, August twenty-second is our inaugural back-to-school block party. What I neglected to put on here was, yesterday, we had new teacher orientation, welcoming all of our new teachers, or many of our new teachers, back to school. August twenty-sixth, of course, all of our teachers return. August twenty-seventh is the first day of school for grades one through twelve. And then September third is the first day back for our pre-K and K. And so we are super excited about that. It was great to hear our school leaders here tonight. I, I hope you caught what they said, but we are ready to go for day one. And that's some lingo that we have been, we've been building excitement internally for that, and we're sharing that externally with the community as well.
Dr. Guillory, would you mind, the August twenty-second, which is tomorrow, could you go over that just a little more because of people? I know we've tried to inform everybody that we can, but I'd like to do this one more time.
Yeah, let me grab that from Dr. Guillory. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So three-thirty to six-thirty at JFK Plaza at City Hall, we're gonna have our inaugural back-to-school block party, which, if you remember, last school committee, I attempted to name that, the Bill Samaras Block Party. That didn't take hold, so I don't have that for you as an agenda item. There is an invitation in your packet, is also posted all over the place. I hope everyone's seen. Has, have everybody seen it somewhere? We also emailed it to all of the committee members. Please feel free, share it out if you happen to have a question asked. Community members, DJ, school and community resources, free food for kids, free food for kids, free backpacks, school supplies, face painting, bus and fire safety demonstrations. I just heard one of our community partners is gonna be, is gonna have an ice cream truck out there. So we're just getting a lot of excitement from our community partners. Our principals are excited, have invited their, all of their communities out to JFK Plaza. I know many school committee members are planning to join us. It's, it's gonna be a fun time. So hopefully, hopefully, everybody around the world, please cross your fingers. The weather will work out. We are, we are looking forward to cool breezes and no rain, but we will see what we ultimately get. But it's gonna be a fun time. I will be out there with my umbrella. This is rain or shine. There is no alternate date, 'cause we can't really have a back-to-school block party after school starts. So this is JFK Plaza, rain or shine, three-thirty to six-thirty, unless, I guess, if we end up with lightning, I guess the DJ can't really play, right? So then we'll have to, you know, I'll have to defer to the experts there. We'll have the fire department will be out there with a truck. Hopefully, we don't need to use it. So thank you, Mr. Mayor. We're really excited about that. Looking forward to it.
No, thank you for organizing that. That's, that's a positive step. Thank you.
And just to bring your attention to the yellow and green chart that you have in front of you, this is what our school leaders were referring to when they said, we are ready. What we've done is, we've looked for the opportunity to say, how can we ensure that schools are ready to open? So a team of us, a group of us sat down and we sort of brainstormed a list of what a school would need to be open on day one. Many of our school leaders took this and they've run with it. And they are already providing feedback of how to expand this. They are using it internally within their buildings to make sure that their, their teams know what they need to, to have in order to be ready. So we've created a school readiness dashboard. School leaders input a red, yellow, or green. Green means I'm ready now. Yellow means I'm in the process of being ready, but I'll be ready. And if we have any reds, that means I need some serious attention in order to be ready for day one. I'm happy to report that at, as last week, we had about twenty-five code reds on here. And as of this morning, our last red turned to yellow. So that's, that's a good sign, and we're very pleased about the progress that all have been chipping in to make sure that our schools are ready. I mean, people are being super responsive. Ricky Underwood, you heard Dr. Henry reference him. He's been running around. Jim Hall, Robin, Latifah, Billy Joe. Anytime we see a code red in a particular category, there's a, a response team that responds to that immediately. So central office is helping our schools make sure that they're ready for day one.
Could you give an example of that would?
Absolutely. So a code red, you wanna code red or just what's on here, period? So a code red would have been an example, a real-life example was, last week, we were at Pine Arts for leadership, and the AC wasn't working. So Jim Hall worked through his connections with the city department. They had a team there that morning for leadership and got the AC working for us. So it's those types of, those creature comforts, if you will, but also we're looking at safety issues. We're looking at a number of projects where our school leaders are saying, we want our buildings to be the best for our students.
No, thank you, Dr. Guillory. This is the type of planning that we need to have, and thank you for doing this, because this is, we want the best for our students, but the thing is, you only can accomplish that when you plan it properly. So thank you for that.
Yeah. No, it's, it's, we are ready to go. I tell everybody, it's a, you know, the first day of school really should be listed as a, as a holiday. It, it's a great time of year. Everyone's excited. Our kids are excited to come back. Our families are excited for school to start back. And our principals and teachers and support staff, this is why they're in the business, to have kids in their building. So for many of our, for many of our school staff, they're already in their buildings and empty schools, and it just doesn't quite feel like school. But they're working extremely hard to make sure that the first day of school is gonna be a great first day. I've had the opportunity, every day this week, I'm in schools, different schools. I refer to the dashboard. You know, I can, I can pull this up on my phone. See, you're having challenges here. Talk me through it. You know, another, I was over at the Stocklosa just the other day. There was a question about getting, being able to upload students into their rosters, being able to see that they had a challenge there. We were able to resolve that issue very quickly. For Principal Cardacey, he's ready to go. Every school is really working hard, and we've got a great team of principals. Floors are gleaming, faces are smiling, and we're ready to receive our kids on day one, and it's gonna be a great day. I will be at every school on day one or day two. I can't get to all of them in one day, but I'll be there day one or day two, and I just have a lot of fun on, on the, the opening of school. And I know our kids do too. So we're looking forward to it, Mr. Mayor. And I believe you and I are visiting some schools together. So it's gonna be great fun in Ms. Dobbins, those schools that I'm going to with the mayor. Feel free to join us. He's very photogenic.
Okay. The high school schedules, any issues with, are they out?
So high school schedules, as of last, actually were posted last week. So we are, we are making sure that all students' schedules are accurate. So there's a process that they're going through now to check. But last information that I had was that all school, all schedules are actually posted for students to view.
Thank you. Thank you for that.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Mr. Nutt.
It's great to see such a complete listing of so many different things to make sure we have and, and we're, we're ready. One of the questions that, that somebody asked me, and I had no idea what the answer was, so I'm gonna ask you. Do we have a basic, I don't wanna say equipment list, but, you know, so if we have kindergarten classes, you know, do we have a, a basic, they need this many pencils and, and paints and, you know, a supply list, a basic supply list for each level to make sure that the teachers, you know, have the basic supplies, the, the notepads, the pencils, the, you know, paste, whatever else through all the different grades? Do we have that? And is it something that we could look into, or, or does it vary from school to school? Ms. Desmond?
So in elementary school, we have typically provided the materials for readers, writers, workshop, and mathematics. So every student has a student workbook. In our readers workshop, every student has a notebook. In our writers workshop, every student has a notebook. So we, we, we have literacy coaches and math coaches that work within their buildings to make those arrangements before the next school year. We order through the curriculum office those materials, and they're available for teachers first day of school. As far as materials at the middle schools, typically, they're websites. If you go to the middle school website, if there are requirements for grade levels, some, some grade levels do have specifics that they like. For example, different colored one-subject notebooks for each subject, those are posted on the website. So if families are curious about that, at the middle school, they can go to the websites and see if there's individual requests. But as far as elementary school, we provide the materials for our students. We do ask that students come with a backpack or something to bring materials back and forth.
Ms. Nutt, I think that was a good question. And I think that's why I'm pleased with the yellow sheet, because the thing is, it's been a long time since central office has, you know, really setting up the direction as to what the school needs are. So the interaction of principals, teachers, and the central office, I, I think we're gonna go back to, in a sense, an old-fashioned look at, you know, what are the needs for our children to have. Good question. Mr. DeCotto, sorry.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Is there a, a timeline or a calendar that states when individual schools are supposed to notify parents as to what their child's room assignment is and/or teacher assignment? 'Cause I, I got a few emails from a few parents that said, I still haven't heard, I don't know where, who, who, which room my, my, my child is gonna be assigned to. So I'm wondering if, is there a timeframe or a timeline that all of the schools have to abide by, that let, let parents know what their child's room assignment is?
I think that's a, I think that's a great suggestion to, to manage that centrally, and we can do that. That's a school-based, school-by-school process. But we can certainly add that to the list and make sure that that's part of our school opening process going forward. And I saw Dr. Guillory taking notes, so thank you, Mr. DeCotto. If you're getting that feedback from the community, we'll make sure that we respond accordingly.
Thank you. Thank you.
Any other discussion? Mr. Artie?
Thank you. Just a couple of quick comments. The, the level of detail here is really impressive. And I think, you know, you've got one of these lists, ensure that fire equipment is operational. That's huge, right? You look across, it's mostly greens, couple of yellows still, but we've had issues with the fire equipment in the past. And, you know, or the top one, all smart boards are functioning, you know, and that's green all the way across too. So I think that, that level of detail for a district our size is really impressive. And then I just wanted to comment on Mr. Nutt's question and Ms. Desmond's answer. My personal experience with many of our teachers is they're supplementing a lot of the supplies that our children enjoy in school. And I, you know, especially at the elementary level, having libraries in their classrooms. I know one particular first-grade teacher who spent, I think it was eighty dollars, to buy those tennis balls that are cut out, so they go on the bottom of the chair, because when the kids are scraping their chairs. Now, some school districts have really quiet floors, so you don't have to worry about that. We don't have that here. So I just wanna put that shout out there, because I know many of our teachers out in the community are supplying their own resources to supplement what the school supplies. And, and I just wanted to say thank you for that. We're aware of it.
That's our role, is to supply teachers with the proper instructional equipment. But if we don't get that information from the central office, we can't do our job. This is gonna, the way this is being presented, this allows us to act as a school committee should. And that's to ensure that the resources that necessary for the classrooms to operate, that they have that type of resources. So thank you for that.
And I think, Mr. Mayor, if I could take a point of privilege, I think that build off of your comment there, school committee, you have it in static form. This is a dynamic sheet. It changes daily, if not hourly, as we build up. You'll see that the yellow, because we do have a full week of work ahead of us, well, less than a week now, ahead of us to make sure that day one truly is the very best day. But as you're looking at it, when you hear from constituents, when you see it's yellow, yes, we're aware, there's still work to be done there, if you happen to see this or hear this. If you're seeing it as green, and you're hearing from a constituent that, for some reason, there's a question or concern, you're seeing it as green. Don't, please don't hesitate. Give me a call if there's some feedback there that we need to hear or understand. We truly are committed to making sure that this is the very best day for every single child on the first day of school. And we're gonna make sure we deliver on that promise for every single, every single student. We have the privilege of having a principal here with us now. He's nodding along. He's gonna make sure that the McAvenue is the best first day of school that every kid has experienced, and every principal is on board with that same. So please don't hesitate. Send me a text, let me know what you're hearing, and we'll make sure we respond.
Okay. Next, we have the Lowell Early College Program. Mr. Superintendent?
Let the exciting times keep on rolling. This is another exciting opportunity Ms. Desmond's been working on to design, and an opportunity here is in front of you. We always like for grant-funded positions, meaning somebody else is paying. Great opportunity to build out programming, important programming for our young people. If you recall, from the last school committee meeting where we talked about that working theory of action, and one of the aspects of that theory of action was aligning our secondary programs with the expectations of college and career. And Ms. Desmond's gonna share with you the excitement around our early college program.
Thank you, Superintendent Boyd. This is, there's actually going to be a greater press release on this work in the future. But this is a collaboration between Project Learn, Middlesex Community College, and Lowell Public Schools. We, the work that's been done here has secured grant funding to support early college expansion at Lowell High School. And this is an expansion of the already successful dual enrollment program that we offer. This program will allow students to, well, it will allow us to do several things. One, market to families what we offer at Lowell High around dual enrollment. Two, be able to support incoming freshmen right at the beginning around what their opportunities and options are. Also, to provide courses, not only through our dual enrollment program at Lowell High, 'cause that is how our dual enrollment program currently exists, but also to offer students the opportunity to take classes at Middlesex Community College, so that you get the experience of being on a college campus. So again, I, I don't wanna share too much, because there's gonna be a, a greater press release on this. But there are a couple of things that are included in your packet. And if you look at the student numbers and outcomes, you'll see a timeline for how we expect to expand on this program. And again, this is a collaboration of many people who've worked hard all spring to get to this point. And so we're going to look at the, this year, working with three hundred juniors and seniors. But as you see, by twenty-three, twenty-four, and I can't believe I'm saying those dates, by two thousand twenty-three, two thousand twenty-four, hopefully, we will be working with at least a thousand students, both junior seniors, but also ninth and tenth graders. So this is really trying to develop that pipeline, so that students are well-aware, and families. Again, we're looking to also do a lot of marketing to families, so families are well-aware of what opportunities are offered to our students at Lowell High School. So there are a couple of things here that I'm hoping that you, you will consider. One, one is that the, the grant funding provides opportunity for us to have a counselor and a specialist. And you'll see in your packet, those two descriptions. They are for the length of the grant, three years. So that's one consideration for tonight, is the approval of those positions.
Okay. So I need a motion to approve and oppose the early college specialist job. Okay, so I need a motion to approve and oppose the early college specialist job description. Need a motion by Mr. Hoey, second by Ms. Doherty. Roll call.
Ms. Someris?
Yes.
Mr. DeCotto?
Yes.
Ms. Doherty?
Yes.
Mr. Hoey?
Yes.
Mr. Lay?
Yes.
Ms. Martin?
Yes.
Mr. Nutter?
Yes.
Seven years approved.
Then I need a motion to approve and oppose the early col, college coach job description. Need a motion to accept by Mr. Doherty, Mr. DeCotto, second by Ms. Doherty. Roll call.
Ms. Someris?
Yes.
Mr. DeCotto?
Yes.
Ms. Doherty?
Yes.
Mr. Hoey?
Yes.
Ms. Lay?
Yes.
Ms. Martin?
Yes.
Mr. Nutter?
Yes.
Seven years approved.
I just have to go back to eight four, the 21st Century Grant Awards. Mr. Superintendent?
Yes, Ms. Desmond?
Thank you, Dr. Boyd. I'm very excited. I get to really deliver good news today.
We, we termed this the good news school committee meeting.
Thank you, thank you. Thank you for the, the vote on the early college work. So we have great news. We, we, with the help of Carolyn Rochelough, who actually writes these grants and is very successful, has, we've received funding of $1.2 million for exemplary programs. So those are our existing programs that have now moved to exemplary status and will continue to be funded, as you can see here, for another three years. Those are the after-school programming at the McCullough, the Lincoln, the Shaughnessy, and the Stocklosa Middle Schools. And then above and beyond that, we have a new three-year grant for $570,000 that will provide us a new 21st Century site at the Butler Middle School. So this is just a point of information, good news, and very excited, and I just want to make sure that I thank Carolyn Rochelough for all the effort she puts in to receive these grants. These grants provide our students with opportunities that we are unable to provide during the school day, and they really make a difference. So I just wanted to bring that forward.
Any questions? Thank you. Next, we have update on alternative structured learning day, Blizzard Bag, Mr. Superintendent?
Yes, this also could be termed the Robin Desmond Meeting. Ms. Desmond, you are up yet again. Keep hitting home runs, we'll keep calling you to bat.
Thank you again, Dr. Boyd. This is an update that we just recently received from the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education Commissioner, Jeff Riley. They are reconsidering alternative structured learning days, so we have this year to continue the program, and after this year, we are going to have to make other considerations. The Department of Ed had a task force meeting several times throughout the year of many educators, many leaders, educational leaders, to discuss how these programs have been working, and it has been determined that after this year, they're going to eliminate this option. So what the Department of Ed, I did contact the Department of Ed as soon as we received the memo, and asked what are some of the options that we can consider, and some of the options are to have a calendar that goes beyond an extended five days. There's, there's nothing that requires us to only have a calendar that extends beyond five days, so that early on, families are aware that school could extend beyond five days. And then other options are to look at our, our structures and our schedules to see if there are some changes that can be made. So again, this is just for informational purposes.
Everybody all set? Ms. Nutter, you all set on that one?
Basically, they said, "Consider, you know, eliminating the April and, and February vacation, just have one in March." I thought that was a great idea.
We won't get into that. Okay, next, we have home education. Mr. Superintendent?
Yeah, the next three are reports within your packet. Staff is here for questions. These are standard reports in your packet.
But on, we got the home education, I need a roll call on that. So you have, you want approval of? I just need a motion for approval by Ms. Martin, second by Ms. Nutter. Roll call.
Ms. Someris?
Yes.
Mr. DeCotto?
Yes.
Ms. Doherty?
Yes.
Mr. Hoey?
Yes.
Ms. Lay?
Yes.
Ms. Martin?
Yes.
Mr. Nutter?
Yes.
Seven years approved.
Okay, then we have report on motions.
Same, the report is within your packet. We're here, stand for questions.
Enrollment figures?
Can we say ditto, or do I need to be more formal? Within your packet, we're here for questions.
Okay. I just need a motion to accept the reports of the superintendent, eight ones through eight nine is report of progress by Mr. DeCotto, second by Ms. Doherty. All in favor?
Aye.
Next, new, under new business policy change recommendations, JLB Health and Wellness Policy. Mr. Superintendent?
Thank you. This came out of a conversation at a prior subcommittee meeting. I believe it was also discussed at a business meeting. Ms. Desmond, again, is available to share with you certain details, and it is within your packet, and this is not new to the committee. It was referred back to us for adjustments. I, I don't want to necessarily read the whole policy, but Ms. Desmond, do you want to give highlights of what the changes are?
So within policy JLB Health and Wellness, there is a, a section referring to the Lowell Community Health Center, school-based clinic at Lowell High School, and what services they are able to provide. The language was limiting, and based on the July 2nd, 2019 Student Support Subcommittee meeting, we recognized that in the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, students are allowed to receive reproductive health services without parental consent. And so this is just to change our policy to be in alignment with what the Commonwealth of Massachusetts requires, and in doing so, we will adjust the Lowell High School handbook. And so every, the Lowell High School staff that are responsible for the handbook are well aware of this if the school committee so votes.
Discussion, Ms. Nutter, motion to approve. Roll call, second by Ms. Martin. Roll call.
Ms. Someris?
Yes.
Mr. DeCotto?
Yes.
Ms. Doherty?
Yes.
Mr. Hoey?
Yes.
Ms. Lay?
Yes.
Ms. Martin?
Yes.
Mr. Nutter?
Yes.
Seven years approved.
Next, we have convention and conference requests, out-of-state travel requests for Lowell High School, Twinsburg, Ohio. Need a motion to approve by Mr. Hoey, second by Ms. Doherty. Roll call.
Ms. Someris?
Yes.
Mr. DeCotto?
Yes.
Ms. Doherty?
Yes.
Mr. Hoey?
Yes.
Ms. Lay?
Yes.
Ms. Martin?
Yes.
Mr. Nutter?
Yes.
Seven years approved.
We have, under communications, a thank you card from the retirement super, of superintendent school, of school Janine Durkin, and also an invitation to the inaugural back-to-school event. Need a motion to take both communications and accept them and place them in file by Mr. Nutter, second by Ms. Martin.
Just remind everybody, 3:30, 6:30 tomorrow, JFK, get, coming back to school.
Correct, thank you. Remind by Mr. Hoey and Mr. DeCotto, thank you.
Can we add to the minutes? This is the most efficient school committee in the history of school committees.